Vicki, can we get started?
Yes, sir, I believe we are.
All right, I called her, I'd like to call her order the Reger City Council meeting, May 5th. Hey, back there, May 5th, 2025. That says clock PM, Madam Secretary, we have a quorum.
Uh, yes, Mayor, we do.
Next, please.
Item two, invocation given by Doyle Cook with Life Spring Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the American and Texas flags.
Please raise.
Is this thing working? Okay.
Um, yes.
Well, she told me it might, might give me a challenge, so I wanted to test it first. Thank you for having me. If we can't bow our heads. Dear God who art in heaven, we thank you so much for letting us be here this day. We thank you for the opportunity to gather in the service of our community. Thank you for the gift of leadership and for those willing to serve. We pray, I pray that, that you grant this council wisdom, discernment, and unity as they deliberate and make decisions. Bless our city and its residents, and in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible, God bless Texas.
All right, next, please. Next, please, I'm sorry.
Next is Agenda Item 3A, Building Safety Month Proclamation.
Alan will do the honors tonight.
Whereas the City of Fates committed to recognizing that our growth, strength depends on the safety, economic value, and essential role of homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity and resiliency of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety, and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professions, laborers, plumbers, and others in construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas modern building code protects us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play, these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfire, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month reminds the public about a critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Fates residents are asked to consider that current buildings and fire codes play a vital role in ensuring safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by the City of Fates' Building Safety Staff. Now therefore, David Billings, Mayor, City of Fates, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 is Building Safety Month in the City of Fated, Texas, and encourage all citizens to join on commending our dedicated staff and their attentive efforts to uphold building codes.
Are we doing a picture or what are we doing? No?
It would be nice if you would do a picture with Steve. All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Next, please.
Okay, next will be Agenda Item 4, Public Comment. And I have one request to address the council from Stephanie Barker, address 1046 North Ben Payne Road. She's going to be speaking on Agenda Item 6B, which is the name change.
Okay.
Hello. I've never done this before, I'm very nervous.
So name an address real quick, please. Okay. Vicki, just stop the clock if you can.
Thank you. All right, so. We, me and my neighbors on North Ben Payne Road are concerned with the name change that is being proposed. Y'all want to change it to Montero Way. Uh, I've lived there for over 15 years. I have many things, we all have many things tied to our addresses. My suggestion, instead of Montero Way, which we are not a part of, would be to change it to East Ben Payne Road. It's easier, and not to change our house numbers. I feel like I'm going to pass out, I'm shaking so bad.
You're, you're okay.
I have a letter from one of my neighbors that could not make it tonight. If I could read this?
Sure.
To whom it may concern, regarding the recent notification of changing our street name from North Ben Payne Road to Montero Way, my husband Bracy Woodard and I, Emily Woodard, reject to the proposition. My family has a direct connection to the Payne family, with his granddaughter being my aunt's best friend. This road and these four houses on this street are a historic part of the Rockwall Fate, of Rockwall Fate, and was here long before Montero. We. While we understand that change is inevitable, that you have made, that made decisions for us, we should not be put through any inconvenience of having to contact all of our entities regarding our life to update our address because of your decision. Our, our question is why there could not be a compromise for the name change to be East Ben Payne Road instead of Montero Way. Moreover, we are not associated with Montero Way, with Montero in any way. If the name changes, are you the City of Fate and Montero willing to make our road the same as Montero Way, with concrete two-lane roads and sidewalks pretty landscaping, instead of dangerous situation that we have today, that my husband has called the City multiple, of Fate multiple times? We cannot even properly turn into our driveway without taking up the entire current road, and the city uses it as a bus stop for kids. Is the City of Montero ready to maintain and upkeep, the upkeep of the road as they do Montero Way, without my husband having to call and complain like he has this past year? Is the City of Fate ready to make us a part of the fiber optic internet that meant Montero residents get, instead of us only having the option of RISE broadband? Is the City of Fate ready to, to change our septic tanks to city waste, like Montero residents have, as well as ensuring we have city gas versus having propane? Is the City of Fate or Montero ready to put sidewalks and brick wall all the way down the side of our property line, 1030 North Ben Payne Road? Where North Ben Payne runs through Montero residential, runs through, and the Montero residential continues? Is Montero ready to allow us and our neighbors to access all the Montero amenities they have? If the answer is no to any of these questions, then our house should not be associated with Montero residential in any way, including the street name. And then she signed it. I had written some things down myself. Just about the fact of all of the inconvenience that it's going to cause us with everything that we're, that we have over the years there. And to, to make it Montero Way.
Ma'am, you'll have to wrap it up sooner than later, okay, please?
I'm sorry?
You'll have to wrap it up soon, please.
Okay. Yeah, so.
I think your point is, you don't want your name, your address changed, it's inconvenience to you, right?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, all right, thank you.
Am I good?
You're good, all right, thank you so much, appreciate it. Any, any else, Vicki?
I have one more, uh, they do not wish to speak, they just want their opposition against the name change on record. And that being Swan Rosado, and the address is 1172 North Ben Payne, but she doesn't want to speak, just wants her opposition on record. And then the only other request to address the council will take place during Agenda Item 6A, Public Hearing.
Okay.
And that's the zoning.
Thank you. All right, so the consent agenda, real quick, we're going to take 5D and move it to the first action. Any, any objection by council? See, and then Vicki will do that. So next, please.
So next will be Agenda Item 5, Consent Agenda.
Lance, got questions?
I do have a question. Um, this has to do with the sales tax. I see that we're at like 47% of budget. Is that because we're a quarter behind?
We, we are about 45 days behind.
How many? Forty-five?
Forty-five days.
Forty-five days behind?
A month and a half, yeah.
So are we seeing a downturn in the sales tax, or is, is it continuing to?
We should be at 50%, we are at 47, so we are a little bit slow. Hopefully, we will pick it up in summertime.
What about permits and fees? Are they on the decrease, or do you see them continuing at the same pace?
It's, uh.
Steven's.
We are at 72, 72%.
It's a little bit slower, I mean, the pace is, do you want to come up and talk about permits? We're starting to see a slowdown in our revenues.
We have seen a slowdown in permits a little bit. Uh, we, we're averaging about 40, we're averaging about 30 a month starts now, so.
Okay, so on, um.
I would add, I mean, we do have, we, the bright side of that is, we have 21 commercial permits that are active, so commercials picked up residential slow.
Okay, so are we, are you guys still expecting to hit budgetary numbers?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, we'll hit the, I think we can predict that we'll probably exceed the budget in, in the building, building permits?
I, I think we're going to hit our number for sure. I think that's, we, we were right on our estimation when we did it again this year. So, I mean, I think, we feel like we're right on target for hitting what we anticipated.
Okay, so, so on the overall revenue for everything, do you foresee, Roger, do you foresee the, how, how po, what's the possibility of hitting a 10% revenue decline?
I, I don't see that, because we already collected 99% of the property tax.
Well, you showed 96 on your last.
Yeah, and, uh, sale tax is only 3% below the estimate.
Yeah.
And the permits is way over the budget at 74%, so we should be okay.
So what do you expect? Do you see, expect any kind of a downturn? I, I mean, because the reason I'm asking these questions, if you looked at, if you looked at the general fund predictions for December of 2026, there is a deficit in revenue period, right?
2000.
In December 2026, right? So that's end of first quarter, next fiscal year.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So the question is, is if you have a deficit at that point, what's the likelihood of that deficit occurring?
So we, we build up, even if there is a deficit, we.
I know, you'll reach into the reserves.
Yes.
But you're still underwater. If that occurs. And I think, and I think Lance is asking more of a cash flow question, so we lose, kind of lose money in the, whenever we don't get that big surge of property tax, that generally the city, depending on the month, doesn't always make that.
Historically, the expenses outpaces the revenue, uh, March to December.
Right.
So, you know, so.
I, I understand that. I under, I understand the financing part of it, Roger. The question is, is what is the likelihood that you guys are going to hit a deficit of 10% reduction, or a 5% reduction in revenue based on the budget come December of 2026?
So we have a recession plan. If it is less than 5%, we deploy our strategy. If it is five, 15%, we have another set of strategy. If the revenue is, we execute the recession plan, like we didn't.
Highly unlikely, well, yeah, highly unlikely.
I doubt it.
Yeah.
You doubt it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've got enough revenue coming in already, and we're, we're nimble enough that we could probably, I would say, it would be highly, highly unlikely.
Yeah, it's highly unlikely.
Okay. Unless something really drastic happens with the overall national economy, war, or major depression. Because if, if, so you guys are, just so that everybody's aware, you're banking money that we currently have received from property tax revenues to cover that first quarter of 2026.
Correct.
2025, 2026.
Correct.
That money's got to be there, otherwise you're running a deficit.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, just one quick, Roger, you're there. So the Water Impact Fund, the Water Impact Fund has 2.2 million in, right, Michael?
It sounds about right, yes.
Yeah, they sound about right.
And that's used for water, that's restricted to water projects, buying property for water projects, right, and all that good stuff?
Correct.
Okay.
If the project's on the water impact fee schedule, we can use it.
And those are, and those are restricted funds, right?
Yes, paid for by developers.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. All right, thank you, Roger. Any more question by council? All right, see you now, take a motion, please.
Make a motion, we approve a consent agenda, except for item 5D.
I wish to second, I wish to second, please vote.
I'm sorry, I missed who seconded that. Thank you very much.
Uh, motion has passed at seven to zero. Thank you, next, please.
Next, we will move to Agenda Item 5D, which is a resolution to approve the purchase of property for the purpose of constructing a future elevated water tower, number three, and that's Resolution Number R 2025-023.
Michael, you want to do a quick synopsis on that real quick?
Sure, I think so. We got it, we got some information from our engineer about, let's say, what Scott, about six weeks, six, eight weeks ago? We've moved fairly quickly with this one, just looking at, um, upcoming capital projects and what we're looking at for pump station improvements, like pump station two, adding pumps and different little things, as we're getting pump station three activated. And one of the things that came up was a, a water tower. And so we started talking about, you know, should we, you know, we've, we've had some recent land purchases here, we're still kind of, we're talking about another land purchase tonight. And, uh, it takes some time, even when you've got willing buyers, but definitely condemnation and getting through all that process is a major, is a major deal. No one wants to do that. At the same time, we look at our number of connections, and we can see kind of the trajectory where that we're in, looking at what permits we've got, what we've got as far as residential, commercial. And so the, uh, the, we brought this to City Council, uh, and you all have allowed us to go forward. Let's look at purchasing, um, property for our water tower, number three. And I think Stephen's got, uh, upon the map here, he's got the approximate location, or actually the exact location.
And I think Stephen's got, upon the map here, he's got the approximate location, actually the exact location. And you can talk a little bit, talk a little bit more about the project.
Ideal spot, they identified the ideal spot for this future water tower and it was almost exactly where this was. And so when we saw the property was available, willing seller, the spot that, basically the spot that we needed it to be, that's when we came to y'all and asked for permission to move forward. We, we always want to buy at a time when we can get a good price and when there's a willing seller. Anytime we've had to purchase and there isn't somebody wanting to sell at the time, it's never been an advantageous purchase for the taxpayer. And we obviously want to avoid using any type of eminent domain or condemnation in order to get it. So as Michael said, we're about five thousand connections over the last three years. We're at nine thousand, or three thousand over the last five years. We're at nine thousand one hundred and seventy-six connections right now. When the time comes that we decide to move forward, we're still three years out from actually, you know, a year to design, couple of years to bid and construct. We don't anticipate using any debt to, at this point, to purchase. Impact fees would probably continue to be collected by homes and then we obviously have some water capital reserves. So it was obviously your direction that we proceeded with this, with this purchase. We agreed on a price. We negotiated. We believe it's a very advantageous price for the taxpayer. And here we are tonight asking for your blessing to proceed.
Mark, got a question? Here, Michael, go on. There you go. There we go. What metric was used to kind of trigger that we would need a third water tower?
So the metric, fifteen thousand connections would be for the next tower. So we're at ninety-one, ninety-one, as of today, Scott pulled the number for us, ninety-one seventy-six home and business accounts. And we are opening about one account, as Steve mentioned, we're down to about one account per day. We were about forty per month. Now we're about one per day, so one a month, or one, one per day. We've got about, if TCQ makes us count multifamily as connections, we've got about a thousand forty-seven multifamily on the ground or in process. And if, that's if you count the canopy homes as multifamily and not single family. Technically, they're single family, but it's one meter right now. So we're about ten, we're about ten thousand. And so somewhere between the next five to ten years, with the conclusion of the building of the master plan communities, we've got about two years left of, of permits. And then we've got, you've got Lafayette Crossing with some single family. There's going to infill single family going on, so looking at that, plus commercial connections, plus multifamily there, it's not going to get, you know, we're on pace. Five, I would say five, five to ten years, Scott, in that window. And so you've got about a year, you've got about a year to design. And then between bidding and construction, a couple of years. So you need about three years and the water tower's got to be active when we hit fifteen thousand. And the water tower is used for essentially pressure for firefighting, there's chief back there, firefighting, and also for just general pressure requirements for the system. So it's not necessarily like a lot of folks will say like, ah, you're putting a water tower in the middle of nowhere. Well, not really. It's to make this current system function. We're pulling strategic location off a line that we think is going to come down, that North Ben Payne area, kind of intersecting with Prince Lane and some high ground. So we want the best combination of where's the water main so that we have to build our own water main to North Texas's water main. So where's water, where's that water main coming from? And then what's the high ground so that we don't have to build up the side or build the tower higher with steel? So that's kind of that combination. So we found that. And then I can't remember who it was who had the great idea to actually look on the real estate. Was that you, Stephen?
I don't know.
We're going to give you credit. We're going to give Stephen credit. If it's somebody else, I apologize. But Stephen jumped on the, on Realtor.com or something like that and said, hey, well, let's just go look around for some property. And so this is kind of like, it's a kind of a blessing that this, this popped up. So that's, that's the metric. We're about, we're about kind of in that window.
In fact, we, the council, historic councils have been very good at timing these. Scott can speak best to it, but TCQ essentially gave us notice that, hey, you're going to have to have a new water tank because of the connections. And sure enough, this summer, our, our pump station will come on.
In the nick of time.
Here next to Wood Creek, just at the right time. So councils have timed this very well in the past and kept us in compliance with TCQ. So we don't have to go under these restrictions that other cities unfortunately at times have had to, to go under.
Started working on, we started working on pump station three, four, four, five years ago? Twenty-one, five years ago, we bought the property in twenty-one from the developer.
Yeah.
And then design and constructions and funding, funding was tricky because of the pandemic and the price increases, so. That's, that's some of the reasoning for why the water tower.
I guess my last question would be, what's going to be done with the extra land that we may not need the tower for?
So the extra land, right now we only need, I think there's six acres, five or six acres.
Yep.
And so we need that first acre and a half, where essentially the, the, that further section on the east. And then as you can see on the map there, you see wherever you see green, sometimes usually water's going at that point somewhere where there's a fence line. But, so the property, and I haven't been out there, but I've been told that it slopes downward toward, toward a little bit of a valley there. So depending on, you know, we, we sold some land for Miss May, so we did some subdividing. We're going to probably sell some land for Miss, because we have to build the road anyway. And there's, there's surplus property, we might as well use it. So that's the plan for some of Miss May. I don't know if this will make sense. I, the napkin math so far says no. That the cost of the road, the utilities and everything to put in one acre lots probably wouldn't make sense, but we could use it for other municipal purposes. We could, we could sell it, we could use it for trading and so forth. EPS could go do stuff out there or whatever. So there's, there's, there's different ways we could use that property, or we could, or we could subdivide it and sell it and then someone else could come in. Ryan, do you have other ideas?
Well, just the other fact that our master plan calls for a westward extension of Prince Lane. So we'll go right through that property. So it'll be our opportunity to dedicate the requisite right of way to extend the road westward to meet our future street plan.
One more question? I'm good. All right, any more question from council? If not, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-023.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any more discussion on this item? All right, please vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, please.
Next is Agenda Item 6A. This is an application for approval of a zoning change request from agriculture to residential suburban density two to allow for a single-family subdivision. Case number is ZR 25002. First will be staff summary, followed by applicant presentation, the public hearing, and then ultimately consider ordinance number O 2025-014.
So Ryan, is the applicant here?
Yes, they're back here. They'll be able to.
Thank you.
Give a brief presentation following staff presentation.
Perfect, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, so good evening, mayor and council. I'll be giving the staff presentation for the Sundale Heights Single Family Subdivision. Project ID is ZR 25002. Here's a general location of the property, which I'll describe in a little bit more detail here in a moment. On the north side of Greenbrier Road, near Joe Burger Park. So this is a straight zoning request from the current zoning designation of agriculture to a residential suburban density R2 zoning district. The applicant is proposing one hundred single-family homes, and I put a little asterisk there because earlier version they were showing a hundred and two, but as they've been refining their preliminary plat, they're down to one hundred lots. The lot sizes are ranging from forty-five to fifty feet wide and a hundred to a hundred and twelve feet long. There's about two point seven acres of open space proposed for the property, generally at the northern end where there's a lot of floodplain. There's also point two seven acres of right of way, and the proposed home prices for the development would be between three hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Here's a street view image of the property. Again, this, it's on Greenbrier Road on the north side, directly west of North Churchill Drive. It's three lots combined totaling up just shy of twenty acres, currently zoned agriculture, and there are currently two houses and a family farm located on the property. So for a zoning case, the applicable approval criteria start with the compatibility with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans. As you can see in the image on the right, the comprehensive plan designates this property and all of the properties adjacent as suburban neighborhood. The R2 residential zoning district is a representative zoning type, and the single-family use is a representative use as shown by the, the clip on the bottom of the screen with the, it's an excerpt from the actual adopted comprehensive plan. The second criterion is the character of the surrounding neighborhood. So with the R2 zoning, single-family subdivision is an appropriate or allowed use. This R2 zoning actually allows for a minimum of forty-foot wide lots. But as I'll show you in a moment, the preliminary plat that they submitted concurrent with the zoning, but which is not before you tonight, shows fifty-foot lots averaged throughout the development. If you look at the surrounding properties, on the east, we have the reserve at Chamberlain Crossing Phases one and two, which have fifty-foot lots throughout the development. To the south, we have Chamberlain Crossing, which is a minimum of fifty-foot lots. And to the north and west, we have reserve at Chamberlain Crossing Phases three and four, which has a minimum sixty-foot lots. This is a clip of the preliminary plat, which is currently still going through staff review. As you can see here, it has the hundred, hundred lots here. All of the lots highlighted in blue are a minimum of fifty feet wide. There's one lot in here that's forty-five feet wide. So the great majority of these lots are compatible with that fifty-foot lot minimum. With this zoning case, we sent out public notices to all properties within two hundred feet. And as of this morning, we had received three written responses out of the eighty that we sent. All three of those were in opposition of the proposed zoning. Some of the public comments that we received were expressing concerns about traffic congestion, which the respondent states is bad now and that additional subdivision would exacerbate that problem, as well as noise concerns. There's concerns about pedestrian safety along Greenbrier Road. One expressed a concern that their, their scenic view of the applicant's property would be changed and, and affected by the development of the property. Concerns about additional children going into the Roy City ISD. And concerns that the additional infrastructure demand from this development can't be supported by the existing system. Running a fiscal analysis, which I'll briefly summarize, based on information from the applicant, the estimated taxable value for this project is forty point eight million dollars, with an annual contribution to the city of about ninety-six thousand. The total proportionate cost for city services is about fifty-nine thousand, and the net revenue is thirty-six thousand nine hundred and twelve. Once we incorporate the cost of roads, as we see as a very familiar pattern, we start to get into the negatives for these types of developments. In this case, we have a, about forty-four thousand dollar deficit. Over forty years, that forty-year with roads deficit is about two point four million. The revenue to cost ratio is one point six three to one, so if we look at purely the ratio of city services to the revenues, that's actually a net positive, but the long-term responsibility for those road, the road replacement cost puts it at a point seven to one. The private to public ratio is twelve point six to one. Curiously, we wanted to see how this project might compare to some of the other projects in the vicinity. So we ran the fiscal productivity analysis on Sundale Heights, the proposed project, against some of the other projects adjacent for the reserve at Chamberlain Crossing. In short, the revenue to cost ratio with roads for Sundale Heights is point six nine to one compared to point five six to one for reserve one and two, and point three nine to one for reserve three. The private to public ratio for Sundale Heights is twelve point six to one versus eight point nine to one for reserves one and two, and five point eight to one for reserve three. So while this does have a negative overall long-term financial productivity, which is again a common pattern for a single-family de-tax residential development, it does slightly perform a little bit better than some of the existing single-family neighborhoods in the area. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item at their last meeting and made a recommendation for approval at a vote of four to two with one member absent. I'm happy to take any questions you may have now or after the applicant's statements.
I got one question for you.
Yes, sir.
What was the opposition from PNC, the two members? What was their opposition?
Yeah, it was, it was the typical comments about basically the, the increase in traffic, particularly with the connection of the project with Stewart Lane, which goes into a reserve phase one and two. There was a concern that they may use the existing stub from that project that would connect to this project as a throughput to Blackland Road or other destinations. So traffic, traffic was really the, the main concern. And then there was also a question about stormwater drainage and wanting, because there's a retention wall, a retaining wall adjacent to reserve, and they were concerned about whether there would be detrimental impacts on, on stormwater flow and drainage and flooding and impacts to the existing neighborhood.
Okay.
Those were the two main concerns.
The council has a question, are you on with the applicant presentation?
I have one quick question. No, no PID, no mud? No PID and no mud?
No, there's not been any discussion about PIDs or muds.
Chamberlain's got no PID, no mud, but reserves got mud set. That's basically mud seven there. Okay.
Okay.
Todd, do you have a question?
Ryan, let's wait the applicant presentation then. Last question. Sir, do you want to, up to you?
Good evening, members of the council. William Solomon, 4512 Legacy Drive, Plano, Texas. I am the president of SMK Capital. We operate in nineteen different states. We're a private equity real estate firm. We focus on single-family residential, multifamily, horizontal infrastructure. We also do some medical office and hotel projects as well. Have had a wonderful experience with the professional staff here in City of Fayette. We look at this project as sort of a natural growth of the community, trying to provide accessible and reasonably priced housing in a community that obviously continues to grow with a number of professional staff and folks that both choose to work and live in this community. You know, with that, we had a long presentation, as I mentioned, at PNC. You know, we're looking at this project, quite frankly, as hopefully the first of a couple that we can do in Fayette. Just happens to be the one that was sort of most easily attainable to get started on at the moment. So as I said in our PNC meeting, very impressed with everybody that we've come across in terms of professional staff and would just request your blessing and continue to move forward in making this investment in your community. Happy to answer any questions. Should anybody have them?
Any, Cody, any questions?
Um, do y'all have any plans to build multifamily here? I know it says it's all single-family, but I've received a lot of questions this week from different residents and they've been very concerned about, I don't know if y'all have previous projects, I guess, where there's multifamily and they've kind of done research and so they're very concerned about that.
Yeah, no, this is single-family designed for folks who want to own their own home. So yeah, no build for rent, no multifamily detached, detached. It's a straight single-family, you know, for sale.
Yeah, you say you want to have access to reasonable-priced housing, but I see on here that you're saying these houses are four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Can you explain to me what you expect to be a reasonably high-priced house? I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, so three, three fifty to four fifty. And so what, what we look at is we look at, and I'm sure your, your city manager and your, your PNC folks can understand, we look at sort of average county wage, average state wage, you know, cost of mortgage compared to cost of renting. As you guys probably all know, the cost of renting has become a, you know, almost a laughable situation at some point, especially if you have children that live in smaller or some larger communities. It's pretty expensive to rent these days and we think the longevity of folks owning their own home, building wealth, and continuing to build out these smaller, sort of growing and more prosperous communities around Texas, I think benefits everybody. And so, yeah, our goal with this is just to create more owners.
Okay.
Scott, any questions?
None for the applicant, but I have some for Ryan after the public hearing.
Alan?
Does this require any kind of a traffic study or impact? Yeah, along with the submission of the preliminary plat, which again is still under staff review and potentially scheduled for Planning and Zoning Commission next week, depending on the outcome of tonight's vote, they did submit a traffic impact analysis as well as a drainage floodplain study. And so those are, you know, those are part of the review of, of the preliminary plat.
And if, and if those fail, what is, what is the recourse for the city?
If they fail?
Yeah, like if the, if their plans here don't meet the standards for to handle the traffic and the drainage.
Well, so TIA generally identifies recommended mitigations if, if performance of the system is not maintained over a certain level of service. So they would general, the preliminary plat would generally be required to follow through the construction phase of the project with any of those recommendations, should they be in alignment with the city's adopted standards. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mark?
Alan?
I got a question for the applicant. You don't have any intentions of, you know, of course, selling, you know, rental units or multifamily. But there would be no way to stop institutional investors from buying large groups of, of the houses. As we know, they, they come in and tend to offer over-market value to buy houses in bulk, much like they did in the neighboring community and, and Chamberlain Reserves.
Yeah, we, we intend to address that in the HOA covenants.
Would there, how would you be able to do that in the HOA covenant to keep?
Well, so, there's a couple of ways. One, you can, you know, no common entity restriction. So, you know, if you've got LLCs and then parent company LLCs, you know, we check ownership records and things of that nature to make sure that the buyers in a community, there aren't more than a certain number. So, it's possible to do that. You know, our goal is to, quite frankly, like I said, find individual homeowners. We don't look for institute, we sort of are the institution. And so, our desire is not to sell to another institution, it's to, you know, find unique, individual homeowners that want to live there.
What sort of limits could you put on that? Could you put three homes per institution, two, five, six, ten?
Well, it varies a little bit. And like I said, we operate in nineteen different states, so state law by state law is a little different with regard to covenants and restrictions. But those are usually things that were pretty significantly, we pour over those pretty significantly with that, because you don't want, and I think you guys have probably experienced maybe the Airbnb effect or the corporate, you know, the open doors, if you will, or corporate housing rentals. You know, they're sort of a lightning rod in communities, especially we've got a lot of folks that want to have a nice, quiet neighborhood for their family. And so, we sort of run in the other direction from that. You know, we want to see, you know, kids in school and families and things of that nature. I'm not really interested in Airbnb situations or corporate rentals in Fayette.
And they're, I mean, but they're all things outside of your control, had to do with state law.
Yeah, well, now, looking at this, but yeah, if an individual homeowner did something like that in the after-effect of purchasing, then there's only so much I can do.
Yeah, state law says they can, you know, you can accept, an owner can accept Section Eight vouchers for that, as they are in there, so certain things are outside of your control. But the attractiveness to them is the smaller lot sizes, same way as the reserves, plus the price of the houses would be, make those, to be very attractive to a corporate entity to come in and buy them and rent them.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Lance?
Question for the applicant.
Sir? Not done yet. Okay, good, thank you.
Real quick, do you have the land under contract?
It's already purchased and closed.
So, you own it?
Yeah, we own it. So, when we do, and I think as we work in other communities in Texas, this is our first purchase in Fayette, but we don't wait for processes like this when we make business decisions. We go in and we make commitments to community, and then we work with the community to sort of collaborate and make sure those things are right. If I were to come in on property like this and tell you, "I'll only purchase it as a contingency", it doesn't seem like a very strong level of confidence or investment we would have in your community. And so, you know, we make the decision to come in and purchase these properties on the value and the basis that we see, not just whether or not you will or won't potentially approve something.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes, my turn. How you doing? Hey, so who'd you purchase the property from?
Two single, single-long-term owners that were there. You have to forgive me, I don't remember their names, but, you know, we did that through a real estate agent, local here to the property.
All right. And so, you bought it from a local family or residence here, and then you bought it in advance, had the zoning. So, there's no plan for you to sell the property going forward. You're going to keep the property no matter what, right?
Yeah, like I said, no contingencies in this deal, we've already closed it.
And then, Ryan, I have a question for you. Thank you, appreciate that.
I have a question for Ryan as well. I have a question for Ryan as well.
So, Ryan, so if I understand state law correctly, and I refresh my memory, we cannot turn down a project due to traffic or infrastructure, as long as they have a TIA, right?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no basis for the P and Z recommendation of saying no to that, but state law says, and they're going to have a TIA done, right? And they're going to make the improvements that they need to make on the roads, correct?
Right, well, that's how they mitigate their impacts.
No, I'm saying, are they going to?
In a discretionary zoning, and Jennifer can correct me if I'm wrong, in a discretionary zoning hearing, you can deny or approve something based on any factors.
No, I understand, but state law also says we cannot turn one down to somebody due to traffic. If there's a TIA available, or they're going to do a TIA. So, that's my question. Is the applicant going to do a TIA and make the road improvements needed?
I'm not sure if I can answer that question the way it's posed.
Yeah. Mayor, I don't know that state law prohibits a council or a P and Z from considering a lot of factors. Now, Ryan's incorrect, there are things you cannot consider, but y'all haven't talked about those things necessarily. But certainly, traffic is one of the factors you can think about in discretionary zoning. But what I think Ryan is saying is that you're looking at the land use, and the land use they're asking for is residential, and as they plat the property, the TIA will determine the kinds of changes they need to make to mitigate the traffic and the drainage problems, so those should not be a problem.
Right, so, but P and Z based their, two people based their no vote on that specific item, and I know the state doesn't react to other than that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can be, to clarify that, the discussion identified some of those items, but the two who voted against it actually didn't state any reasons for their no vote.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. Okay. Any more questions, council?
Yes.
Stewart Road, the stub. Why was it built?
I wasn't here at the time that reserve was built. Obviously, it was a contemplated extension of the system into the adjacent property when that plat was approved.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you, Ryan.
Scott, did you have a question?
No, he wants the after-public hearing.
Oh, okay.
All right, now, open the... Okay, next is the public hearing, right, Vicki? So, I'm open the public hearing at six forty-four. Anybody who wanted to speak for or against this project, please step forward. She said we had one?
Yes, I have one request to address the council from Rodney Brumlow, address one oh-two Jeremy Drive.
All right, Rodney. Welcome.
Rod Brumlow, one oh-two Jeremy Drive. You know, we're cramming in a lot of housing in a small area. I live in that area. You know, traffic, you know, that many houses, you know, you're saying four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. You know, I question that, if there can be that much money in a small house, small lot. You know, unless it's, you know, marble floors or something like that going in. But in the mornings, when you're leaving, try to get out there in five fifty-one. It's atrocious. It's fixing to get worse. You know, questions, can we bring up traffic? Yeah, we need to bring up traffic. It affects all of us. Blackland Road, Greenbrier Road, all that, you know, it's notorious, you know, you're going to have to gut that road up again, repave it. You know, many years I've been there, about every two years, two and a half years, I got to go rip it up and redo it. You know, it's not, you know, I question the construction quality, but it's not so much construction quality, it's the design of it, the ditches. It lets that road slough off in there. Those problems are still there. So, you cram more houses in such a small acreage, you're just, you're fixing to blow up, you know. But getting on five fifty-one, lack of traffic lights, different things, there's going to be a lot of accidents. You know, you know, I'm looking at a new house. My house is bigger than that lot, you know, and it's not a Taj Mahal, you know, but the footprint is bigger than the lot they're wanting to build on. Just in my house, only eighteen hundred square foot I'm looking to build in. You know, what, you know, you know, build family homes and not teenage homes. You know, homes that size, they're for a couple, they're going to be moving on. That's my opinion. But, you know, city council needs to deny it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else like to speak for or against us, please, step forward.
I didn't fill out a paper.
Yeah.
I have actually a question.
Probably can't ask it. Randy, name an address, please.
Yeah, well, Randy Long, twenty-two sixty-three Bryant Lane. I don't live close to that area, so I don't have a real dog in the fight, but I do have a concern. I've been trying for almost five years to get traffic enforcement in my neighborhood, and I can't get it, because one of the reasons is we're down, we're always down three officers. We've been down three officers for as long as I can remember. Now, we're going to create another neighborhood with more houses and more calls. I'm trying to figure out how we're going to police what we've got, much less continually adding to it, to the DPS burden. So, it's, I'm confused.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else? Saying that, I'll close the public hearing at six forty-eight. And then, I think, and then you. Just one of them. You're first?
Okay.
Ryan?
So, this is my concern with the project. I know we've got preliminary plat that shows fifty-foot lots. It's preliminary, it can change. My concern with this is the by-right issues with what's in the UDO. It's going to be a UDO issue that I'm going to struggle with this. It's, this lot is going to be single-family residences. Totally get it, totally understand it, it's totally appropriate. But as it relates to the zoning codes we have in place currently in the UDO, we have R one, which is our largest subdivision lot, which is ten thousand square foot lots. And then, it goes immediately to R two, which is four thousand foot lots. That is, in my mind, a fairly big gap in between.
R two is four to eight thousand foot lots.
It's four to ten, I believe.
Yeah, four to ten, yeah, excuse me.
Four to ten.
So, it has a wide range of available lot sizes within that neighborhood.
Absolutely, but with that minimum in there, this is a pure zoning case. We're not looking at concept plans, anything like that. It's a pure zoning case. If we approve this, they can change the preliminary plat to all forty-foot lots, if they choose to. And that's my concern, is the by-right part of this. So, I'm going to struggle to vote for this because of the by-right part of it.
Sure.
And I'm going to ask that, as we move in later into the year, we probably want to revisit how we do that. I, we have approved forty-foot lots in this town, and part of the commitment in doing that in those planned developments was that those homes were a significant upgrade over and above our standard code. They were done through planned developments, and if we're going to do smaller lots like that, in my opinion, they need to bring significant additional value over our base code. So, the by-right forty-foot lot, I struggle with. The other part that I'm struggling with is, I know traffic can't be an issue, but the fact of the matter is five fifty-one is a concern. While we're having a public hearing on it later this month to look at the engineered plans, which have been paid for and the engineering's in process, the county has absolutely no plan to expand five fifty-one right now. The dollars aren't there, and it's, while their processes find ways to try and backfill dollars kind of at last minute, there is absolutely zero plan to address five fifty-one right now outside of engineering plans. And that's a real concern, too. My biggest issue with this, those, the by-right part of it, and I'm going to struggle with it because of that, because it can easily turn around and be forty-foot lots without any significant benefit, so.
May I respond to that briefly? Sure. Again, I'm just, I'm stating facts here, just kind of giving you the trajectory of this project. When we first met with the applicant, they initially expressed a desire to do fifty-foot lots. We gave them the guidance on what zoning district would be appropriate for that. They consistently, you know, shown a project with fifty-foot lots. Again, the preliminary plat that they submitted, which is kind of pending tonight's vote, you know, heading to Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration next week, would be a development with fifty-foot lots. So, in a scenario that you were mentioning, yes, they could pull it and do forty-foot lots. Based on my professional kind of observation, it doesn't appear that that's their desire, but you're correct that they would have the right to do that with an R two zoning.
Yeah, so I have equally amount of concern with the by-right for a couple of reasons, like Scott stated.
But I also have an issue with the by-right factor, that they don't have a planned development, so we have no way of mandating building materials or anything about how the houses are built. So, they could build basically to our least common denominator, which is our UDO, which is not necessarily something that we want to see or would see for a forty, hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. Once this is zoned, because it would be by-right, they could basically put in there whatever they want. It'll be siding or whatever it is that's in the UDO for that, and I have a real problem with that. And I sort of have a problem with zoning anything for a neighborhood or single-family homes or anything without some sort of a PD and a development agreement that's attached to it.
So, Ryan, just a couple of questions. I know, I think I know the answer, I just want to verify. So, one, we cannot pick conditions on zoning, correct?
Say that again?
We cannot pick conditions on zoning.
Not on a straight zoning request, no.
Okay. And then, another part is, I share the concerns of them not waiving state law, right? Right now, I think, Steve will tell me I'm wrong, but isn't the Building Centers, International Building Code two thousand nineteen here, or two thousand twenty-one?
Steve will have to clarify, I think we're looking at twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one? So, by state law, he only has to build to the International Building Code two thousand twenty-one.
That's International Residential Code for single-family homes.
But that's not our UDO, right? Our, we have an UDO, but the state law says that the two thousand twenty-one overrides that.
That's related to building materials. So, to clarify, Councilmember Harper, a PD can't establish a higher level of building materials requirements. It has to be through a private contract, through a development agreement.
That's what I'm asking.
But we still have design standards in our Unified Development Ordinance, Article Five, which we can still enforce, such as non-monotonyer standards and other, you know, fenestration articulation standards. So, while we can't regulate the building materials per state law, there still are some residential design standards that we would uphold with the development.
Okay, but the building material design standard at the national level is pretty, a lot less than our design standards, right, our UDO?
We, my position is that we can still uphold our design standards, we just can't regulate building material per the state law.
Okay.
So, that would have to be regulated through a development agreement.
Okay.
Not even through a PD.
I understand, thank you so much, appreciate it. All right. Mark?
I was just ready to make a motion.
Oh, just a second. Any more questions? Okay, I'll take a motion, please.
Okay. Lance, you done? Okay. I'd like to make a motion, we deny ordinance number zero-two-zero-two-five-dash-oh-one-four.
A second.
Motion, a second, any more discussion? Okay. Motion's at six to one, with council making the voting no. Next, please.
Next will be Agenda Item Six B. This is an ordinance to consider renaming the eastern leg of North Ben Payne Road to Montero Way. That would be ordinance number oh-two-zero-two-five-dash-zero-one-five.
Alan?
Is there a presentation first?
Brief presentation.
Okay.
I'll run through it fast.
We were so ready for this.
I just want to make sure that there's context for everybody related to this. All right, so this is a proposal to rename North Ben Payne Road. So, as indicated on the image on the right, North Ben Payne Road currently east, opposite Montero Way, and it has for a very long time. There are six properties currently served by the eastern leg of North Ben Payne Road as, after it turns off of the northern trajectory. Our adopted master thoroughfare plan shows Ben Payne Road extending northward toward FM five fifty-two. Recognition of this is kind of what started this conversation. In addition to the fact that Montero Phase Two, currently under construction, includes an extension of North Ben Payne Pass to the current intersection at Montero Way, and recognizing that the duplication of road names will quickly cause problems with not only mail and package delivery, but most importantly, emergency response. So, because of those facts, we initiated this renaming of the eastern leg of North Ben Payne Road with our proposal that it be renamed to Montero Way as a natural extension of the west-north Montero Way. As typical convention is to continue the uniform naming of roads as they continue either east-west or north-south. Again, so that matches the naming convention on the western side. We do recognize that there's a slight offset at the current intersection, but that is the closest intersection, and so that would follow typical naming practice. Prior to tonight's meeting, we did send out certified mail to all of those six property owners that would be affected by the proposed rename. Letter was dated April fifteenth. We've also been coordinating with Rockwall County Nine-One-One Addressing Coordinator to make sure that this process and any proposals would meet the needs of the Nine-One-One Addressing System. We've also prepared a follow-up letter that, based on what tonight's vote is, we would send out to provide additional guidance and make sure that we're there to support the property owners if the name change were to be approved through that process, which would include about a thirty-day transition period where both the current and new addresses would be in the system to make sure that there's continuation of service while the name change were to go through. So, with that, staff is recommending approval of the name change. I'm happy to take any questions.
Alan?
Yeah, I'm not a big fan of naming anything else Montero. I think we have enough Montero in our city. And I think the historical context that's been brought up by one of our residents, as well as other residents I've spoken to, you know, kind of honoring maybe the Wheeler family, Wheeler Lane, East Ben Payne, might be confusing for EMS.
I have a feeling that our...
I have a feeling that our, the county's nine-one-one addressing coordinator might have a little bit of an issue with the east and the north.
So, um, I, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, and then we can discuss it. Um, I make a motion that we deny ordinance two thousand twenty-five-dash-zero-one-five and instruct city staff to come out with a new ordinance naming it Wheeler Lane.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
Can, can we discuss?
Hey, just second? No.
Yeah, you second, second.
First second, first, then we have a discussion.
I'll second.
Thank you, now we have a discussion, thank you.
Okay. Me, him, who's first?
Okay. You started.
Are we allowed to, I, well, I don't know. If we do it Wheeler, I don't, I can't talk directly to her. Is that still going to cause problems for them as far as her, to her point? It's still an address change, and it's annoying, and I get it. I wouldn't wanna change my address either after having it a million years, um.
Hey, just say real quick.
Sure.
Michael, you want to answer that question, or Stephen, you want to answer that question?
If each change at Wheeler Lane is gonna be address change, right?
Right, right. I think we're kinda stuck with one, the nine-one-one folks are basically saying like, we have to rename this road.
We basically would have to restart the process, which we could do, we could certainly do, and I recognize it's an inconvenience and not one that I wanna impose on anybody, but this is just, we're gonna have to tear off the Band-Aid at some point to, to make this transition happen.
Or do nothing.
Uh, so we would, we would have to, um, coordinate with the nine-one-one address coordinator just to make sure that Wheeler Lane isn't in existence anywhere else in the Rockwall County. Uh, that would need to be approved by them ahead of time, and then we would have to come back with a new ordinance and just kinda go through this process again.
Even if we did, let's say, you talked to the nine-one-one people and they said East Ben Payne would work, would they still have to lose their, you know, like your number, not just the?
Oh, yeah, I mean, this is an address change.
So, no matter what?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm afraid so.
Yes.
So, what, what happens if we do nothing?
Well, if we do nothing, as time goes on, there's our additional addresses along North Ben Payne, and at some point, you're gonna have some confusion and issues with emergency response when you have two different roads with the exact same name. At some point, the county, I'm not sure if they have the ability to, but they could try to impose a name change upon us because their, their nine-one-one addressing system would be having issues. Like, I'm, I'm speculating a little bit there, but I have a feeling that some people would have issues with receiving packages, with receiving U S Postal Service. But again, most importantly, we just wanna make sure people are having consistent and rapid response with emergency services.
Okay, thanks.
Scott? Anything?
No.
Okay, Alan?
There's currently not a Wheeler Lane on Google Maps, and I looked, but so that, simplify that, but, you know, the, the Wheeler family owned that property across that whole Ben Payne, and it just seems, you know, speaking with some of the other residents along there, if there has to be a name change, which it sounds like there has to be, um, then we should consider something other than Montero that's came here within the last couple of years.
When we just have the resident, there are six residents, we'll have them decide. You got one request for that, we had two requests not to change it at all, why don't we let them decide what they wanna do together? And then go back to council. I, I get what you're doing, so next thing you get back to staff is just ask them, right? Two said no, one wants a name change, just, there's six of them, we can get them together and say, what would you like to do?
Actually, technically, there's five of them.
Five of them.
One, two, two of the properties owned by the same people.
Yeah, two, two of the residents mentioned Wheeler Lane as being acceptable.
So.
But we had two tonight, we didn't want nothing done.
Some time ago, we actually did, kind of, I, it wasn't me, but I think Steve might have, you know, had that conversation, or somebody in our staff had the conversation with some of those property owners, and we got like a handful of different names, so, you know, you're gonna ask six people, you're gonna get maybe eight different responses, but we're absolutely open to that. Again, I don't have a, you know, I don't, I'm not married to this idea of Montero Way, that's just standard naming convention, but if there's a preference by council and by the residents to have a, a unique name to that, uh, eastern leg, we can certainly help facilitate that.
Okay, you mean your motion to Wheeler name or another name agreed upon by the residents?
Someone wanna amend it, and I'll second it.
Well, just to be, just to be clear, um, um, whatever, um, I, I, the way I understand Councilman Robbins', um, uh, motion, and he can tell me if he disagrees, it was a motion to deny, uh, the name change to Montero.
And instruct staff.
Well, and he suggested to staff Wheeler name, because we, whatever we do, we're gonna have to post, um, as a future ordinance change, and whatever name's chosen, Wheeler, Rosebud, I'm just making up names, whatever the name is, has to be posted on Agenda Items.
Yeah, I, I, but I'm just wanna make sure that the staff has the option of finding a different name than that.
Sure, sure.
That's just an example, that's right, okay.
Those are the ones that, those are the ones that contacted me, and Wheeler was an acceptable name, but.
So, Vicki, do you have the amendment change for the motion? It's gonna be Wheeler or any other, any other name that the staff recommends?
Okay, was that amendment approved?
Yes.
The amendment was approved?
Okay, right, I'll, I was talking, you good? Amendment, you second it? All right, well.
I'll accept it.
Thank you.
I'll accept the amendment.
And she said, and she seconded.
I accept the amendment as well.
Lance, your air name on that one.
I don't care, I, what I'm, just wanted to say was, what I wanted to say was that there's a big, there's a large enough offset from Montero Way to bit, to the current North Ben Payne, that having a, having a unique name is not a big issue.
Sure, yeah.
All right, so we had the vote on the mo, the amendment first, then the motion. I'll favor the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment passes seven to zero, next. We're good? There's any more questions on the, on the amendment, the motion? All right, let's vote, please. So, this is denied, right now?
This is to deny.
Okay. All right. Motion passed seven to zero. Um, Michael, are you good with direction? Ryan, you guys are good with the direction?
Sure.
Good? Vicki, you good?
Yes, sir.
All right, next, please.
Next is Agenda Item six C. Discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding Resolution number R two thousand twenty-five-dash-zero-two-four, approving the inter-local agreement between the City of Fayette and Roy City I S D for the construction of Miss May Drive and King Road.
Who's taking this one?
Stephen.
Stephen.
I'm pulling up a presentation, if you wouldn't mind. Uh, this is, uh, just kind of continuing a, a previous, not really, not a, actual continuance, but, uh, we've come before you with the Miss May Drive. Uh, when we went forward with our design contract, there was a letter of intent from the Roy City I S D to help fund the construction of Miss May Drive. We now have before you the actual inter-local agreement.
So, we're just looking for an inter-local agreement?
Yeah, I'm just pulling up, just, uh. There's, it's just for those, for those that may not be, um, aware exactly of the road we're talking about. This is the, the Miss May Drive continuing up to five fifty-two, um, to connect with the new Worthy Fayette High School. This, the inter-local agreement also references North King Road, which is an improvement that the school district is funding a hundred percent and is responsible for as part of their, uh, traffic impact analysis that was done. So, uh, before you is an inter-local agreement, which, which, um, Roy City has agreed to in concept. It'll be at their board meeting next Monday night, where they will pay one-third of the total construction cost of Miss May Drive. They will pay one-hundred percent of the North King Road. The only reason that those are in there together is, we've, we've discussed with Roy City School District, um, and agreed it's advantageous for both of us to bid these projects together, to get economies of scale and have one contractor to, to bid on both improvements. Uh, the City of Fayette has agreed to just manage that project as opposed to managing the school district, who does not very often build roads. It's easier for us to step in and, and manage the entire construction project. So, as we've already, uh, discussed in the past, Rockwall County, and we're in the process of utilizing their two million of reimbursement, uh, Roy City I S D will, uh, cover one-third of the cost, and then the city, uh, of course, would pay the rest using road impact fees. So, tonight, again, inter-local agreement with the school district, with their agreeing to pay the, um, one-third of the Miss May Drive costs.
Okay, any questions by council? Now, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution R two thousand twenty-five-dash-zero-two-four.
Motion, I have a second? Second. Um, Vicki, you good?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's please vote. Motion has passed seven to zero, next, please.
Next will be Agenda Item six D. Discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding homestead exemptions.
So, this is, tonight, Michael just providing guidance back to staff to prepare the ordinance, correct?
Say, say again, sir?
The action item.
Yes.
Does not have an ordinance attached to it, so this is providing guidance back to?
Oh, yes.
Yes, yeah, discussion, right.
Right. Scott or Alan, and will you want to take this one? Or just make a motion?
Yeah, we, we, we've talked about this plenty, and the impact, I think we've been talking about it for a little over a year now, and, and, to reiterate why I support this, it, 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 it does create a, an effective increase in our tax rate, and, and I want to fully acknowledge that. So, it will increase taxes a little bit for our business owners, for multifamily, for rental properties in our city. But it also, by, by doing this, will provide tax relief to all the homeowners in the city, a- and at some point, um, i- i- it's really the o- only arrow we've got to, to, that's clean to be able to, to provide property tax relief to our residents. Um, I, the numbers are in the packet, um, I, I, I won't beat that to death, but, um, 'cause, 'cause we've, I feel like we beat this issue to death. But, um, a- a- again, i- it's, it's something that provides relief to our homeowners, and, um, we've got a low tax rate already. Um, we've got the benefit of that, a- and we've got really protections from the state for, for, that will always keep our tax rates low. But, um, anything that we can do, especially i- i- in a year to where we're looking at road bond impact on our homeowners and, and things like that, um, I'm just, I'm in favor of, and I will always be in favor of, so. Yeah, I think that twenty percent homestead exemption is great, and I think that, um, should we ask the city staff to come up with an ordinance that we also remove the sixty-five and over, uh, exemption, um, this would be proved to be a bigger benefit for the future people in the sixty-five and older, um, uh, with their, with the limit, and current people would not be affected, um, other than going down. And I just feel like, uh, uh, double dipping into, uh, the, the tax base is, is not fiscally conservative for, for the city, and would could lead to more compounding problems five, ten, fifteen years down the road. Again, the, the limit's in place, which means that the seniors who are currently, um, in this, um, their taxes do not go up, but could go down if the twenty percent is greater. The future sixty-five and older people, next, this coming year, ten years from now, they would be locked in at the twenty percent exemption, which would also exceed the fifty thousand dollar exemption, um, on, on average. So, um, if we, if we do make a motion, I wanna make sure that we remove that, um, as well, so we don't have two compounding, um, exemptions for a demographic that's gonna be growing rapidly over the next ten years.
More Kelly? I knew, I knew, oh.
Okay, here we go, um. I, 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 I like the idea of an across-the-board, uh, homestead exemption, I really do. I noticed when you wanted to take away the over sixty-five, uh, homestead exemption, you didn't mention disabled.
Correct, I did not.
Okay, so, you're, you're carving them out there, uh, on that, just wanted to make that clear. It's, if you do this and pass the twenty percent across the board, no matter what happens with that twenty percent, if anybody ever decides to lower it, that will be darn near impossible ever to get back, once, once it's gotten, 'cause trust me, it was, it was fought very hard to get, when y'all took it away, to begin with, to get it back. My other issue is, at a time when we're trying to draw in economic development, is to raise taxes on businesses, I think is a bad message to people who are trying to start businesses, that we're going to, uh, a- at that point in time. Now, if, if we wanted to do it across-the-board homestead exemption, but the money came out of the city's money, which we do not have, uh, I'd, I'd be all for that, but, um, it seems to me like there's, we're, we're separating the disabled and the set, and, and over sixty-five, which, there is a distinction between the two, uh, on there, but both of them are on fixed incomes, uh, on there. They will actually get a higher, uh, deduction on the twenty percent across the board, there's no argument about that. But once that's done, now everybody's homestead goes up and down based upon the will of this council and any future councils. I, I just don't think this needs to be voted on tonight. I think this needs to be something to be, to be considered by future councils.
It's not being voted on tonight, we're giving, we're giving guidance to staff to prepare the ordinance for the next week.
I understand.
Okay. Just to let you know.
I understand, but I'm, I'm stating my point on that one. And I'm not willing to, uh, to say I'm for taking away the disabled. I'm just saying that it, there, if you're willing to take away the over sixty-five, I don't understand why you wouldn't, at, at the same time, do disabled. But, uh, that, that's me, I, I'm not for taking away either, myself, uh, on it. But I also think it's a very, very bad time to, uh, we're trying to draw in businesses into Fayette to say we're going to, uh, we're going to raise the taxes, 'cause we all know businesses do not pay taxes. Businesses pass on their taxes by raising the, the prices of goods and services. Uh, that's, that's an economic fact, uh, they, things become more expensive. Uh, there's my piece.
We beat this to death.
We beat this to death. I would be in favor of voting for it.
All right. Cody?
What did, what'd you say, Lance, I didn't hear?
He's.
I said I would be in favor of, of supporting Scott's motion.
Okay. Um. It's a hard call, because a lot of, you know, individual residential owners, they are hurting right now. It is hard, um, to afford your property taxes, and I think that it's a good thing to give some relief to the residents here. I understand that this is an increase, um, for businesses, but I think that, um, with us growing exponentially in commercial in the next few years, I think that, um, I think that it's gonna be okay. So personally, I am in support of, um, what Scott's proposal is. I am not in support of taking away the sixty-five plus, um, exemption that we have right now, but, you know, those are just my thoughts.
Jennifer, I have a question for you. So, generally, I am specifically designed for the homestead exemption, right? So, we can, can we have two separate motions, one for the twenty percent and a one for the over sixty-five? Or is one motion, because the agenda says, homestead exemption only?
I don't think that's what the agenda says.
It says, discuss any actions regarding homestead exemptions.
We, we tried to make it as broad as possible.
Okay, so can we?
So, a, so a disabled is a homestead exemption and a over sixty-five.
So, that's broad enough to cover both items?
I believe so.
Okay.
And just to, can I do a quick clarification? So.
Yeah.
On the, I know Mark mentioned like, so when the homestead, let's say the, the homestead was eliminated for the over sixty-five. If you're an existing over sixty-five person who paid taxes last year, you're frozen at that dollar amount.
Limited. Limited, it can go down.
I'm sorry.
Not frozen, it's limited, you can't go down, you can't go up.
Right, so you're limited at that dollar amount. Bonds pass, other things change, that makes the, right, you're kinda stuck, you're stuck at that, whatever. If there's other things that make that number go down in the future, then you're, you're limited, not frozen, limited at that new number. So, if, say, let's say, the council eliminates the over sixty-five, so then, if you're a new, if you're a new person coming in, you wouldn't get, you'd come in at a little higher rate, so if you're a new senior, you'd come in at that rate. But it would depend, like, yeah, I guess you could move it all up and down all the time, it just, it would depend on when people came in. So, I hope that helps.
No, it, it's, it's completely, I understand it, it's just, it's two exemptions for a group of people that's going to be growing in, in size, and, you know, you see what's happening in the City of Heath right now with. Y'all done? Okay, uh, sorry, um, you see what's happening in the City of Heath right now, where they have a growing population who has, who has this limit in place, and the tax rate's gonna keep ticking up and ticking up on other people as this, as this burden keeps getting spread out amongst the other, other residents. And I just feel like, um, if we're all in the same boat with the same exemption, getting the same benefit for being homesteaded inside the City of Fayette, it's a better benefit than the fifty is right now, and we're not kicking this down the road as this, as this group, group continues to grow and, and spread the, the debt, the, the burden on everybody else.
But Alan, they're gonna, so here's where the logic kinda falls apart. State's gonna pass a law saying that over sixty-five's exempt for property taxes period, more likely.
And then that's, cool.
Well, and, and then, then you're still double dipping, right, to your point, and then the homestead exemption for our school district will be leased to one forty and two fifty, and that will be another forty percent easily.
Other than my interaction with our state reps and our school board members, we can't control any of that, we can only control the City of Fayette portion.
For the public.
Right.
You're making a statement, saying what's gonna be done, I'm telling you, September, there's gonna be massive, massive tax production.
I, I, I understand that, I was just, my, my strong feeling, my conservative fiscal nature of this is like, you know, having a, you know, double dipping into the, the tax base is just not, not right for me, so.
Why don't you make a motion, let's proceed.
All right, I'm gonna make.
Let's, let's do discussion first. Let's, let's do discussion first. Let's make a motion and have discussion. We did this for a year. Go ahead, Alan.
Well, I'll make a motion that we instruct city staff to come back to twenty percent homestead exemption and remove the fifty, fifty thousand dollar sixty-five exemption.
I'm motioning, I have a second.
I'll second.
All right, second. Jennifer, are we good? Just a second.
I'd have a question.
Just a second. Are we good with the motion, the way it is? Vicki, we're good? All right, uh, Mark.
And just to be clear for the public, this won't accomplish that either. It's, y'all are giving direction to, to staff to bring back a future, yeah.
Agreed. Mark Hatley first and Cody. Mark, go ahead.
Uh, my, my question is, why separates two sets of fixed incomes, over sixty-five and disabled? Both of them are in the, the same financial, on average, the same financial, they're generally on fixed incomes.
My thought on that is that the disabled, um, have significant hardships that, um, not all seniors have. Um, some seniors are disabled, I get that. Um, and I, uh, I just feel like, that's just my thought on double dipping into the tax base. I just, I just disagree with it, so.
But that is double dipping.
For, for the disabled, correct.
Right. You say you're, you're, you're for double dipping for who you want to go do it. So you're, you're, you're.
Yeah, uh, I'm, I'm trying to help those that are, that are more disadvantaged than the sixty-five and older, so.
No, I, I'm, I'm for keeping, I'm for keeping both exemptions.
Well, that's.
Myself. I'm, I'm for helping both.
The motion's been made, so.
Okay, I understand.
All right.
Good. Any more questions? Mark Hatley, you good? Cody?
Okay, just for clarification from what Michael was saying. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. No, it's okay. Um, what you were saying is, is that anybody that currently is sixty-five and up, and we already limited it, not froze it apparently, and they're going to keep that even if we come back later on, like even if we propose this ordinance and we do what Alan is saying, are the people that we've already, that are already sixty-five, are their taxes not frozen but limited, um, permanently? And this is for the new people, like that are sixty-four that are going to get something different?
Let's run through, maybe a fictional example. So let's say someone paid a thousand dollars to the city and the exemption is removed, the bond passes and the homestead goes in at twenty percent. So they should drop to about eight hundred dollars. Looking at Teresa, Teresa and Raju. So they would, because what would happen is the, so they're, they're at that, now it would be, they would, I'm, this may be not fair, because they would calculate their home value with the exemption dropping, so that'd be a bit weird, but they would be essentially, they would take advantage of the homestead, the general homestead, whatever that impact was. And that may be, it may not be an exact two hundred dollars, because we have to see what the, the other exemption going away would be, but essentially their taxes would fall in some regard. They would take advantage of the general homestead because they are a general homeowner, so it would apply to all homeowners. So if they've already paid the city taxes, they're limited at that number, they come down, they're kind of re-limited for next year, essentially they're stuck at that number, whatever that number is. Let's say it's eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Now, if you're sixty-four and you're all excited you're about to get this thing, you would, every taxpayer would get this twenty percent discount essentially.
But they wouldn't get the fifty thousand.
But as they cross that line into being, to being sixty-five, they wouldn't, um, they wouldn't get that fifty coming in.
And, uh, to be clear, you're not saying take it back to twenty-five thousand that it used to be. You're saying zero.
Correct, and, and here's the other thing about people who are sixty-four and coming up to sixty-five, is that they would get the twenty percent exemption plus the fifty K, which is a substantial additional benefit than the current people who are, who are in there too. And I just, the twenty percent's better than the fifty.
Sure.
So that, that's, that's my point and it's, and it's shifting additional money onto the rest of the taxpayers, um, for a demographic that's going to continue to grow in the city. Um, the disabled, uh, demographic grows at a much, much slower rate and I just feel the hardships there are worth it, um, and not the other way around. So that, that's, you all can deal with that in a few months if you want, but, uh, that was my motion, so.
All right, this is Mark Hatley and then we're, go ahead.
I'm sorry. No, I'm done.
All right, okay. Anyone else? All right.
Yes, please.
Looking at you.
Um, so, we are not, are, the tax is not limited for the disabled, correct? It's, it's only limited for sixty-five and over?
We have an, we have a disabled exemption?
We have an exemption, but that, their taxes are not limited.
No, no, they're not frozen or lim.
Right, so.
They're not limited.
So technically, having a frozen, uh, tax rate is, is an advantage over the disabled, which is just getting the, 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 just getting the exemption today, because, for an example, if you're at two hundred dollars to the city of fate and you're, um, sixty-five and over, you're never going to pay more than that two hundred dollars. You can go down from two hundred, but you'll never pay more than two hundred. So no matter what we do with the exemption rate, you will never pay more than the two hundred dollars that you're paying when your taxes were
Right.
locked in.
Yeah, even if your home doubles
That's correct.
the next ten years.
So the disabled don't get that same benefit. They get, their tax rate still fluctuates. They, they just get an additional, uh, exemption that others don't get.
Right, we take fifty thousand dollars off their home value. So it's a fifty thousand dollar.
All right, so I just want to make sure people understood that there is a difference between the disabled and the sixty-five and over. The sixty-five and over is frozen.
Big difference.
Uh, not frozen, it's limited to the two hundred maximum amount. It can always go down, but it can't go over the two hundred. Where disabled could go to three hundred, it could go to four hundred, uh, it could go down, but they are not limited in their tax rate, so.
Okay, Michael, do you have all the guidance you need? You guys understand what the request is?
I think, yeah, once we vote.
I want to make sure you understand the request.
I think we, I think we have, we have understand. We'd bring back an ordinance that would accomplish the, the general homestead at twenty percent and eliminate the senior exemption.
The motion passes, but yes.
If it passes.
All right, cool. All right, any more comments? Let's vote, please. All right, one more time. What are we voting on?
Michael, can I say something?
No.
Remember we, remember we talked to Kevin?
Mm-hmm.
Correct me if I am wrong, Jennifer, you know, over sixty-five, we cannot completely take that out, only up to three thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, three thousand. We have to leave it at three thousand.
We have to leave it at three thousand.
Thought three thousand, thought three thousand was the minimum, what we could, could just remove it completely.
Wait, once you end, you have to go down to three thousand.
It's technical, yeah. Three thousand.
Okay, one day at a time, we're voting on over sixty-five, removing the exemption, over sixty-five exemption down to three thousand dollars. That's what the motion is, Mark. Direct staff become the ordinance. That's what we're doing tonight. Thank you. Okay, good? I start to vote. Um, sure. Make Alan deal, I make Andrew deal with this issue later. Everybody vote? Motion is passes five to two to direct staff to bring back an ordinance for next council meeting with, uh, Councilman Chen and Councilman Mark Hatley voting now. Next, please. Michael, you good?
Yes, now, um, clarifying, it'll be on the next regular council meeting, so the nineteenth.
Okay. Good, Alan?
Peachy.
Peachy. Excellent. Vicki, are we good?
Yes.
Excellent, next, please.
Okay, next will be Agenda Item Seven, Mayor, Council and City Manager Reports.
Lance.
Then Alan.
Sorry, um, first of all, congratulations to all the new city council members. God rest your soul. We had a great event on Saturday with the new pump truck push-in. That was, uh, we had a pretty good turnout. Um, it didn't last too long, sitting there all shiny and new inside the fire station. I got called out within ten hours, so congratulations on getting that apparatus in. And, uh, thank you to city staff for all that you do. Thank you for DPS, uh, your firefighters and your police officers for everything that you do for us on the city. And thank you for, uh, specifically to the finance department. Um, I know you guys are in the middle of budgeting and all that and the work you're doing, the hard work you're doing, the transparency that is part of that process. Uh, you guys, as a city, we couldn't ask for any better professional staff. Thank you all.
Alan?
Yeah, that was a fun event pushing the truck in. I was kind of wanting to push without the engine, but, you know, and, uh, hopefully there's no scratches on it yet, right? Still shiny and new. Um, yeah, this is, uh, last full meeting for, for some of us and, uh, you know, the term limits are, are there for a reason and it's, it's, it's important. Um, and I've been honored to serve up here for, for two terms and keep this chair and, uh, and, uh, Rick, this, it's a good chair. You'll like this chair. So, and congratulations to all of our elected officials, um, soon to be elected officials. Um, and, uh, thank you for everybody else who also, um, ran campaigns and wanted to step up and serve, um, and jump into the gunwin. Um, thank you, city staff. It's been a pleasure working with every single one of you. Um, really has been. These, these are, these guys here are what make this place special. Um, it really is. And thank you all very much. That's it.
Cody?
Um, thank you to all the candidates. Y'all ran a great race, um, and we appreciate every single one of you. Um, I also wanted to give a special shout out to Brett Bushnell, who just had a baby today, so congratulations to him. He's a new dad, so, um, but that's all I got.
Mark Hatley.
I wanted to, uh, thank everybody who came out and voted in the election. Uh, I wanted to congratulate, uh, Rick, uh, Andrew and Martha, uh, on their, their win. I wanted to thank Emily, um, Brett, Lorna and George for, uh, running. Uh, it takes a lot of, it takes a lot to get in there and run. Everybody ran a really great race. I want to thank everybody who came out to vote. That's your chance to, to tell everybody what kind of a city you want to live in. That's, uh, that's the, 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 everybody can speculate, uh, on, on it, but Election Day tells us a lot about the direction you guys want this, uh, city to go in. I would like to thank the, uh, the chief and the entire fire department for allowing us to, uh, join in the push-in. That was, uh, that was a great event. Got to hear the history of that, uh, learn something. Uh, everybody that showed up for that, that was wonderful. I'd like to thank the city staff for always, uh, being there when we need them with questions and, uh, doing some research when we ask them to do. I know we, we kind of push you guys a little hard sometimes. And as always, I'd like to thank the DPS, uh, for having a safe city. Uh, we are a safe city for a reason. We have a tremendous, tremendous DPS led by our, our chief Lombard and I'd like to thank, uh, thank him. So, thank you all very much.
Mr. Harper?
Yes, sir. Just want to thank, uh, everyone who came out and spoke for, for everything this evening. Also want to congratulate the, uh, the new, uh, council elect, uh, Rick, Andrew and Martha. Uh, looking forward to seeing you guys up here next, next meeting. Enjoyed the, uh, at the fire station, the push-in of the truck. Thanks for, for putting it in reverse so we didn't get run over by the truck. That was a great, great idea. Um, but I, I know the kids had a blast. Everyone had a, had a good time and, and, uh, the city got their truck washed for free, so it was a great, great time had. Uh, and again, that's it. Thanks.
All right, congratulations to the new council members. Congratulations. Uh, Chief, thank you for what you guys do for the city. Appreciate it. Michael, same thing for the staff. You guys do a wonderful job and, uh, pushing the truck in was cool, so I appreciate doing that. All right, next, Vicki. Next, please.
Councilmember Kelly.
I'm sorry, Scott. Sorry about that. I'm used to going this way, then you go for it.
Absolutely. Come on. First off, the, the event Saturday was awesome. It, it, it's, it's, first off, it was great to see all the firefighters from the other communities come over to support it. Um, but, but the cooler thing is getting to see all the kids climb on it and, um, letting them feel like they're a part of it all. It's, I, I, I think at every point in every little boy's life, they want to be a fireman and, um, letting them climb in that truck. Um, you know, when you think about the price tag on it, you might cringe a little bit, but, um, it, it was a great event. Thank everybody for, that was there and, and took part of it, part in it. Um, I want to, first off, congratulate Andrew, Rick and, uh, Martha on their election. I also want to, um, give some props to Emily, Brett and George and Lorna for running and throwing, throwing your hat in the ring. Um, I, I also want to commend all the candidates for the way they ran their campaigns. Um, there was a lot of noise online by people not in, maybe involved with campaigns, maybe not. I don't, I don't know, but the candidates kept everything above board and, and that's not always the case, so I want to commend everybody for that. I also, um, you know, I look forward to you guys getting up here next week. It's definitely different being on this side of the dais, um, but, um, excited for what you're going to do for the city. Um, I also want to take a second to personally thank, and we'll probably have this opportunity next week, but I want to personally thank, uh, Mayor Billings, um, Councilman Robbins and Councilman Megace for their dedication to the city over the last number of years. And, and in some cases, Lance, it's been a long, long time, but, um, but again, it's not easy sitting up here. It's not, it, it, it's, it, we, we expose ourselves to things. We expose ourselves to criticism. Some of it deserved, some of it not. Um, but, um, we, we can always agree to disagree, but I, I believe that everybody that's served up here and especially the three guys that are about to roll off have served, have served the city with honor and, and, and have done the things that they think are right for our city. And, and I think that's a good thing. We can always agree or disagree on what's right or what's wrong, and those are great conversations to have, but, um, at, at the end of the day, we're responsible for making votes that, that we believe are right for the city. I, I, I think these three guys have done it and, and I, I, I commend them for, for what they've done and, um, I hope they will continue to come and yell at us from the podium every once in a while, I imagine. So, thank you.
Never. Uh, I'm no, no, my angle one? Sorry, that's kind of my, my apologies. Okay, Vicki, I think we can move on. I'm not totally sure right now.
Okay, so now we will do a city manager report.
Yes, there you go, Michael.
I'll be very brief.
I was trying to help you out and, and.
Thank you. I'll be very quick. Uh, Tuesday, six PM here, Parks Board meeting, and then next Monday, Budget Meeting, um, six PM, but we'll also have some preliminary stuff, five thirty. We'll get kicked off with the transition with, from old candidates, or old, uh, council to new council.
Good? All right, Vicki, maybe now.
Okay, now, item eight, executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, the city council will recess into executive session closed meeting to discuss the following. A, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, to deliberate regarding real property. One, to consider the purchase of Blackland Water Supply Corporation property located on North Ben Payne Road.
All right, I take an executive session at seven thirty-five. Thank you for. Thank you for-